All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Tuesday, April 6th Board Workshop. Thank you all for being in attendance tonight. Just a few matters of housekeeping here before we get started. Our next workshop is scheduled for May 3rd. That is a Monday, so it's a little different than normal because May 4th is our Teacher Appreciation, that is Teacher Appreciation Day, and that's when we will do our Salute to Education event that night. So it is scheduled for May 3rd, Monday night. It is possible that we would actually gavel in on that night and have a specially called Board Meeting. We may have some items that we would need to do that evening as well, so if you would just make a note of that, that evening. Our first item tonight is Public Comment. Mrs. Godfrey, has anyone signed up to address the Board?
No, I have not.
Okay, thank you. Item two will be receive our TASB pay plans presentation. We don't have TASB with us present tonight, they're joining us remotely, and so we'll talk a little bit about the mechanics of that this evening. We have it set up, so you'll be able to see them, you'll be able to see their presentation on your, on your screens. The room and the Internet can hear you all when you speak into this, into your mic at your desk. However, our TASB representatives can only hear you if you speak into this handheld mic. So Sarah is going to be out front here, so if you have any questions or comments directly for our TASB presenters, if you would just let her know, she will bring you this microphone so that you can be heard by our presenters. This is the only item we'll have, we'll deal with this because the rest of our presentations will be done in person, but, so we'll work through that. You know, annually, we receive our TASB information back as they do their salary studies across the state. We, before this workshop, we have a meeting internally. For many years, Mr. Sanders has joined us there in that meeting representing the Board. This year, Mr. Moore joined us representing the Board during that bigger meeting, so if you had any questions about kind of the, the deeper details of the process, Mr. Moore certainly can share that with you all, but, you know, we, we talked through details, we talked through options and exactly what we would present for you all this evening. So tonight with us, once again remotely, we have Jennifer Barton and Amy Campbell from TASB. And ladies, I hope that you can hear me. Are you able to hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, well, wonderful. Well, we will go ahead and hand it over to you, and once again, if any Board members have questions, we're going to have to pass the mic to them, so we'll, we'll try to signal you and let you know if we have any questions in the room, okay?
Absolutely. We will be very patient. All right, so I'll go ahead and get started, but I just want to say good evening to everyone. We are very excited to be here virtually. Unfortunately, we could not be here in person, but maybe that will be an option hopefully next year, and we will be back to normal. We've been doing this a little over a year, so this is pretty normal for us right now. But my name is Jennifer Barton, and I am an HR compensation and compensation consultant for TASB HR Services. I have Amy Campbell with me tonight, our Director. We've worked with the district for a few years, Amy a lot more than me, but I get to be the person to present again tonight. I did present last year. So every year, we work with Conroe ISD on your pay system maintenance, and so this presentation may look familiar, but it obviously has updated data. And we are happy to answer any questions or talk through anything that we have in our presentation tonight. Just, you know, the first message that we want to give you is that we always appreciate working with Conroe. You definitely have the heart of your teachers and your employees in mind, and we enjoy being able to maintain your compensation system, working with your HR folks, and of course, your cabinet leaders to be able to do this. So we're excited to give your findings for tonight, but please stop us if you want to discuss at any time, or if you have any questions. We don't have to wait until the end, this is a workshop format, and so we're here to, you know, answer anything that you may have. But without further ado, I will go ahead and get started. The presentation's a little bit familiar, but we always like to go through with some of our process, just so everybody's on the same page. So every year, whenever we work with the district, we do go through a process for the pay study. And so we have a few steps. We collect our data that we look for every year. We look at, you know, compensation data, and we have kickoff discussions with the district, you know, typically the HR department, but the HR department is able to communicate to us any goals and initiatives for the district, any issues where you're might, maybe having some issues with pay, that is presenting recruitment or attainment issues, maybe some turnover issues. And so we do look at specific issues every year to address, even though we maintain your system over each year. We gather our market data from our annual survey, and so each year, we do have our big survey that we put out to districts. We gather that information from all of those districts that participate. Unfortunately, we don't have 100% participate, but in the Houston area, we're very fortunate that we have pretty much everyone there participate, so we have a lot of real-time data for our process for Conroe. From there, our analysts helps match those common jobs, the jobs that we benchmark title for, and then from all of that data, we analyze and we build models for improvement. So we look to align your pay structures, making sure that your pay structures are competitive, as well as adjusting any employee pay that needs to be adjusted, not only to market, but internally for that internal equity, and we just want to make sure that everybody's kind of scooped into those pay ranges and everything looks really good every year. And if need be, we address any specific issues, working with the district to do so. So just a little bit of Compensation 101. We like to go through that since this is our workshop, but, you know, when we're looking at, you know, our market pay strategies for, you know, employee pay, we're really looking at that market rate. And so that is the target rate. We use that target or both I, and we're also looking within a range, to have employees within a range of 90 to 110%. We would say that that's competitive to market, while we would like to see everyone around that 100% mark. We also know that that may not be feasible for a lot of different reasons. You know, they could be newer to the job, there could be how the district values that job zone and so forth. Then we see our 110 and, or above 110, some of those outliers. We'd also like those particular people to be a little bit closer to, to market, but there are a lot of reasons sometimes that, you know, maybe pay would be above that 110% mark. Anyone below that 90%, we definitely want to look at their pay and make sure that they are closer to market. We'd like to get them above that 90% and even closer if possible, so we look to try to make some adjustments there to make sure that those employees are moving closer to that market rate over time. Just stop me if you have questions, otherwise, I'm just going to plow through here. I always say that because I'm just like, okay, it's silent. Just one more point on your market pay strategy. So when we're looking at that market rate, we're really looking at that midpoint area. So that's where we're trying to move to. Okay. All right, so for Conroe, we look at our market districts, and so these are the same districts that we've been using over time. You can see that they are in the Houston area, and so there is, you know, a variation of small to larger districts within this group, but this is our market group. And as I said, our Houston area districts are really good about completing our surveys, so we do have every, you know, our teacher schedules, as well as market data for exempt and non-exempt for every single district in the market, which is great. It gives us lots of data points. Other market sources that we use are statewide, for our statewide, I'm sorry, for our directors and above, we use statewide data for districts with enrollment of 50,000 students or more. We also use some third-party vendors that we purchase that data to use for our non-school market. So we look at the Economic Research Institute, or ERI, and then comp analysts, and those are both for the Houston metro area. And so we're using those values, as I said, for non-school market and sometimes for our combined local and non-school type jobs. So the first group that we look at is our teachers. Our teachers' market salaries here, as you can see, Conroe is the orange line, and your local market median is the blue line, and we'll get into the specific numbers here in just a second. We always like to look at the visual, and you can see that Conroe is competitive in teacher pay, especially at zero, five, and 10 years. You can see you're above that market median there. You do come in closer at the 15- and 20-year mark, however, you are still competitive to market and above market, as we'll see on the next slide. So here, you can see your starting salary this year was $57,000, and the local market median was 56, so you're $1,000 above there, or at 102% of market, which is competitive for that starting rate or that job fair number that we really want to attract those new teachers to our district. Looking at our other years that we benchmarked for, 5, 10, 15, and 20, you can see that you are still competitive across the board. Even at 15 and 20 years, you're at 100% of market, you're still at a dollar differential above market. At 15 years, it does come down to just about $35 above market, but you'll see, whenever we give your, your teacher hiring schedules, that there are some, we do apply some adjustments so, to make those years a little bit more competitive to market, making sure that for Conroe, your teachers are paid above market every year. Conroe offers very typical teaching area stipends, as we see in other districts. You offer the general master's degree at $1,800 compared to the median stipend of 1,000. Right now, you do not offer secondary math and science, when you're, six of 11 of your peer districts do. However, because your base pay is so good for your teachers as a whole, you know, you might not necessarily need to have that stipend to try to supplement. And so what we suggest every year is to make sure that we're monitoring just the recruitment or attainment of math and science teachers, and if at any time we feel like that's an issue in the district, that maybe we're seeing more turnover, we're not able to attract the quality teachers that Conroe would like, then we could always offer that stipend. The district also offers the special education self-contained stipend at market median of 2,000, and that is offered by nine out of 11 peers, so we see most of your peer districts offering that stipend. And then you do offer the bilingual stipend of $4,500 compared to the market median of 4,200. And every district that you compete with in your market offers that bilingual stipend, and we always say you want to offer as much money as possible for bilingual because those people are very difficult to find and very difficult to keep, so they can kind of go where the money is. All right, so now we're looking at our exempt. So we're pretty much looking at our administrative professional groups, and so we're looking here at our administrative business, administrative education, and then some of those jobs that we have on the teacher hiring schedule, but that are compared in the professional market. And so overall, you can see your groups are also competitive to market. Administrative business is 98% for employee pay, but your pay grade midpoint to market is 101%. Administrative education is even with market or 100%, and then your pay grade midpoint is also at 101%. And then those select jobs that we have, that we compare to the teacher hiring schedule, such as some of your ag teachers and so on, are at 97% to market. But again, going back to the market strategy, if you're within the 90 to 110%, we say that you are competitive, and so again, these groups are strong to market there. For non-exempt, we are looking here, again, at the same type of comparisons, but we also look at pay grade minimums. So we want to look at the start rates for these jobs because these are your hourly, hourly workers, and a lot of these jobs do compete with the private sector, those jobs outside of the school district, you know, anything from your food service to your retail to technology and so on and so forth. So looking at your four groups that you have for non-exempt, we have the administrative support group at 101% to market for employee pay, as well as a pay grade midpoint to market of 101%, and then your starting rates are right at market or even. So still, strong starting rates. Instructional support, we're looking at about 5% above market for employee pay to market. Your pay grade midpoints there are about 7% above, and your pay grade minimum or your starting rates are again at 100% to market, so very strong for your instructional support. And when we're thinking about your instructional support, you're thinking about your classroom aides, your special education aides, which have been, you know, a topic that we've talked about before in Board Meetings, especially the special education aides, making sure that they are paid strong to market, and we see that this group as a whole definitely has improved over time. And so auxiliary at 103% to market, pay grade midpoint 5% above market, and then your pay grade minimums are strong also at 5% to market. Talking about those manual trades, you know, a lot of times, it's, you know, they do compete with that private sector to where maybe they could make more pay, but being in the school district has a lot of benefits also, so making sure that those trades people are really paid strong and you, and Conroe's doing that. And then police department, this was a focus last year, there was a high percentage given to the police department, and you can see that they are strong to market here also, at 102% to market, those pay grade midpoint is 100%, and then your starting rates there at 4%. So again, your non-exempt salaries are doing really well. So overall, for all of your groups, strong pay as well as strong structures, and you continue to maintain that over time, which is a great thing. This definitely speaks to the efforts not only of the district, but of the school board and what you do for your employees. So our recommendations, we recommend that you adopt the proposed pay plans with the adjustments that we've provided, and we'll talk about that here in a minute, for next year. It's providing the strong starting salaries, continuing that, making sure the midpoints are aligned with market, making sure that the jobs are aligned within the structures, making sure that most of your employees are scooped in there and they're making progress towards that midpoint at a reasonable rate. And then one thing that we really want to give kudos to, to the district this year is making sure that the starting rates for all of your non-exempt employees are no less than $12 an hour. And so we were able to make it at $12 an hour for your auxiliary, your police are in the $13 range, and then your, your instructional support, your administrative, administrative support groups, we are able to get a $12.50 an hour for starting rate. So definitely just, it's huge efforts there to be able to do that for all of your hourly employees, and I know that they will appreciate that. We recommend that you adopt a general pay increase to maintain market position. So this year, our recommendation is 3% across the board for all groups, and so that would be 3% for your teachers, your exempt pay groups, as well as your non-exempt. So 3%, about 3% for everyone, which is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. We've tended to do the mixed models in the past, but 3% would be a strong raise for everyone this year. We also recommend that you implement additional adjustments to teacher pay, the teacher pay structure to improve market competitiveness. So we talked about, a little bit about those years where we did dip a little bit to market, so we've added a few adjustments in there to make sure that we are a little bit above market for those years, 7 through 10, and 12 through 19. And then we also recommend some additional adjustments for employee pay, as well as for internal equity purposes. And so for any individual, once we apply the general pay increase, if they are still below the minimum of the pay, the pay range, since we did make some adjustments to structures, we want to make sure that we bring them one more percent above that minimum, just to make sure that for, you know, they are making more than anyone that would be hired to the district as a brand-new, new hire. For some of your groups, your AB plus, for AB and all but grade four in AE, we want to give a 1% of midpoint adjustment for anyone's pay who is, you know, they're, after the general pay increase is applied, they are still less than 90% of midpoint. So as we talked about, we would like to get them at least at 90% and moving towards a stronger percentage there. We do apply a placement scale in some of your groups, and so grade four in your administrative education, which is more of your special education-related services people, a targeted area that we've been working on for the past few years, as well as administrative support in all of your auxiliary group, except your bus drivers, we apply a placement scale there for 12 years to midpoint. We have a work ticket that at a smaller amount of years over time, and so this year, we are continuing that at 12 years. Then for your instructional support and your police, we have a placement scale applied there for 10 years to midpoint. And then for any employees that are considered in the educator career pathway, we ensure that their pay is, is the 2% above the daily rate of a teacher with the same years of experience, making sure that our educator career pathway is intact and strong, and that we do incentivize those teachers that want to become instructional leaders that can't, or even, you know, possibly instructional coaches along that line. So anybody that's in that career pathway, counselors, APs, principals, and so on. And so, you know, making sure that their pay is just a little bit above what they would have in the classroom. And then our last recommendation is to continue to annually review the district compensation plan, just like Conroe does every single year, and update is needed to maintain market competitiveness. So basically, continuing this process that we do every year for the district, just to continue to review that with the district as well as with us. And then we are, have provided the cost model for the 3% model, so we went 3% across the board there, and that would provide a 58,500 starting salary for your teachers, and then 3% across the board, and then we would have those adjustments that we discussed applied there. So for your teachers and librarians, that would be those adjustments to maintain that market competitiveness in those years, and then for the rest of your groups, it would be the adjustments that we discussed. And that is our spiel.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Are there any questions for, oh, I'm going to pass it to you, to Mr. Sanders. Thank you very much.
Jennifer, a couple of questions that I have. One, we had talked about a minimum of $12 per hour for all auxiliary workers.
Yeah.
I know we had to make some mid-year changes last year to custodians to get them above that, and I know that your data typically includes other school districts. What we ended up doing, though, was having to look outside of school districts and just see that they could make more than, more at Taco Bell than they could be in a custodian. And so I want to make sure that we are looking at outside market data so that we don't have something like this happen again, where we have to make these mid-year changes to our budget.
That makes total sense, absolutely. So when we look at market comparisons for our auxiliary group, most of our market comparisons for our benchmark jobs are compared to non-school values. We typically combine non-school and, you know, your, your local market, and so we do look at that. And yes, to your point, this year, we did have a request to look at custodial pay, and we made adjustments in the January timeframe, and then we actually looked at them again with this pay maintenance process, and we did some upgrades there for your custodians, and we made sure that they were placed appropriately in pay grade, so hopefully in the future, we will not see some of those drops. I think the other thing that will help that is raising the floor, and so we've raised that floor to the $12, and so everyone has shifted, and so I, I think we will probably see fewer issues along that line of what you're talking about, of those hourly workers really falling below and being, you know, so far, I guess, you know, apart maybe from market value or even those in the private sector around you. But you are correct. It is, it is hard whenever you have some of your positions that compete with the Buc-E's and some of those food service and retail jobs in the industry there that are a lot higher than some of your, your school jobs. But with that being said, having a school job sometimes has its benefits that maybe you don't have in those particular jobs, so you do get to be off on certain holidays and your hours maybe are not, you know, shift work overnight and things like that. So, you know, yes, of course, we look at pay, but we also look at some of those other factors that influence jobs within the school district.
And in case it's helpful to know, because the custodians moved faster than others in auxiliary, they are, they have a new starting rate of 1279 for next year, so they have a very competitive market start.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Campbell. Also, I had a question about bus drivers. I know we also made some mid-year adjustments for bus drivers as well. I know that is a hard position to fill many times, depending on the economy, and I just want to make sure that we looked at bus drivers again carefully, and, because I think we ended up last year doing just a dollar across the board, and in some cases, that was maybe the minimum raise, and in other cases, it was more than that. And I want to make sure that we're taking care of our bus drivers as well, because they, they are taking care of our kids out there on the roads. And so I wanted to see if you'd address that one, and the third one, and I'll be quiet, is police officers. I know that last year, we had talked about additional career designations, that police officers could attain master police officer and other designations, and I just want to make sure that we have implemented those in this process as well.
Yes, so for bus drivers, yes, we have for sure looked at bus drivers to make sure that they have not only competitive start rates, but that they are receiving the raises as they should. Bus drivers are just such a volatile position in the sense that, you know, it's very difficult to keep up with a lot of the school districts that raise those particular rates. And, you know, that is one position, I will say, every single project I think we do at TASB HR Services is we look at bus drivers. And so we know that that is a hotspot for every district, and of course, it's been for Conroe. We discussed them last year, and we made some adjustments to how we do pay with them in that particular group. They're kind of their own special group when we look at, at bus drivers. And so, yes, we address pay with them to make sure that they, not only your current employees have strong rates to market, but also that we have starting rates.
And I can be your data support person, Jennifer, because I have the file.
It's a little easier. Going back and forth.
So in current year data, your bus drivers are 1% above market and well above many of your peers, and the starting rate is even with market, so we've kept you in that same position. But you do have a couple of extra things going for you, too. You offer more duty days than all but one of your peers, who you're equal to, and you offer more guaranteed work hours than almost all of your peers as well. So while the market values are pretty well-aligned in what you're paying, in essence, you're paying more because you're allowing and encouraging your drivers to work more than your neighbors, and so you've provided a very competitive total comp package for your drivers. Keep going, Jennifer, sorry.
Okay, I appreciate you being that support. For police, yes, y'all, the district gave a big raise last year for police, and you really focused a lot of efforts on them, and so that has actually really bumped them in a really competitive way. I would say the starting rate, it's in the $13 range for your police officers and your police group, and so we definitely see stronger rates there. To your point about those officers that could get the additional credentials and certifications, yes, we have actually incorporated that in within the pay files, so that way, we can distinguish between those officers and those, you know, employees that have those different certifications. And so they are, they are slated a certain way, and they have different dollar an hour amounts. So, yes, we have taken care of them, we are very mindful of them. They also have the placement scale to 10 years for their midpoint, so they move pretty quickly to that midpoint mark there, and that helps with their pay also. So that group is, we know that they were lower to market last year, but they are above market now.
And just to be clear, the $13 an hour is for non-officer jobs? That's like your prevention control monitors. Your officers themselves have starting rates for next year of nearly $24 an hour. So it is, again, very competitive, even with constables, city and county PD and sheriff's offices as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Barton, this is Mr. Moore.
Yes.
I'm, correct me if I'm wrong here, but on the adjustments column for teachers and librarians at 333,000, that does not include us implementing new stipends for secondary math and science. That's maintaining no stipend in those areas.
Correct.
Okay, so my next question might be for Ms. Green or Mr. Rice, if we have done any calculations about what adding stipends to those positions might do. And if you're going to get to that later in the budget, I mean.
We, we have not, because, at this point, we haven't seen the need. We, we look at it every year, and we, you know, our principals have not reported a need for us to take that route, so we, we did not build that in at all into this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Hi, Ms. Barton, Deitron Williams. The 3%, can you give me kind of the buildup of that, or what was the basis for just a flat three across, across the board?
Well, we, we actually provided a 1%, a 2%, and a 3%, but Dr. Knoll said that 3% is what was requested and that they felt comfortable with that. So I would probably defer to Mr. Rice about that, maybe. There might be some more context to that particular piece there, but I will say, we're talking to a lot of your peer districts, and we are hearing that a lot of districts are going to be a lot more willing to give those 2%, 3% kind of raises. I know Amy can always jump in, but I've heard a lot of my districts that I work with in the Houston district that are actually looking to give raises in that area, and so by giving 3%, it's going to keep you competitive with your peers, as well as, we always know that the market's going to shift probably about 2%, so 3% is really a great amount to be able to give to your employees to stay competitive in pay.
And I would say yes to everything Jennifer just said, and I would add that typically the differential increases by pay group are designed to fix problems, and this year, we, in the market comparisons, didn't identify a lot of problems. There were some adjustments that were needed, but it wasn't as though specific job groups were below market and others were above. They were all pretty similarly placed, and so we're able to go back to more of the across-the-board adjustments that we did a few years ago.
0.2% for adjustments is not that much, really, considering.
Yeah, so if I can answer that, Mr. Williams, so the amount of money that we showed you in the, the preliminary budget from a few months ago, when we first showed you, that was the amount that we felt comfortable with as a lump, as a total sum into next year's budget. As we started working this, 3% fit there. They did present us with a 1% and a 2%. We felt like this was not the year to try to short-change our employees. If anything, this was a year to be aggressive to the market, as we're trying to, you know, keep our staff and recruit new staff. Now certainly, we can show, you know, that's what tonight is about. It's about showing you the initial piece, so if you have. So if you have further, you know, if you'd like to see something different for police or something different for bus drivers, or if you'd like to see a different percentage, we can bring that. Now, one of the things that I will tell you when we move to the budget presentation, what's not shown here in the flat three percent is we are still building in a retention stipend into the budget that is not included in this three percent. So we're, we're looking at a three percent raise across the board, but then also employees gaining a retention stipend. It serves a few benefits, just to remind you, just as a district. One, it's a one-time payment, so it doesn't, it doesn't bump everyone's salary and commit the district to paying that amount for years to come. It's a one-time thing, so it does allow more flexibility into future budgets. But two, when we have historically done that, we've done a flat amount and not a percentage. By doing a flat amount, it helps our lowest-paid employees more based on the percentage of their salary. And we think that's a nice balance that, that we do. We come back with that, and let's say, and that can vary, right, based on the health of next year's budget. We've done five hundred and six fifty, is that the two, six seventy-five? You know, that's, that is something that when we reach that point next year in the conversation, depending on our enrollment and our budget situation and what has, what transpires in Austin over the rest of the summer, you can choose to go higher or lower with that. Or it doesn't have to be given at all, but we'll build it into the budget for you to have that option moving forward.
Can I address, Mr. Williams?
Please.
So I don't have to need the mic.
Yeah, I'll send it to you, that way they can hear you.
So as the, the board member that was in on those conversations, my reason for, for wanting to look at the three percent had to do with their advice that they just mentioned about the two percent market fluctuation, anyway, and looking at things like historic inflation rates, historic raises in healthcare costs that get passed on to the employee. And so I kind of felt like a three percent was the number that would actually allow our people to not have a zero net sum gain. So we show a raise on paper, but then it gets all taken up through other softer costs, if you will, or, or healthcare costs or something like that. So that was, that was my input as a board member in the room, that I didn't feel one or two was enough to meet those other things, that three was kind of seemed where they would actually realize an actual raise at the end of the day.
And just to echo what Jennifer mentioned earlier, looking back at market comparisons for Conroe from five years ago, you were the same distance below market, but now you are above market. And so just to echo what she just said, the, the three percent helps keep you where you're at, as opposed to losing some of that ground that you've gained over the past few years.
And, and certainly, Mr. Williams, like if you were to say, hey, you want to be more, if you all as a board said you want us to be more aggressive, you wanted us to go to three point five or four, th- those are things that we could work in the budget. I think Darren and I would both tell you, we would be more comfortable here at three and then you, and, and say be more aggressive with the retention stipend once we know where that is, that, that would, that would make us feel more comfortable with the budget. Certainly, we would, we would like to compensate as much as we can, but that, Darren and I both have, have become very fond of the retention stipend and the flexibility that it gives us, so. Any other questions for TASB?
I do.
Okay, we're going to send it to Ms. Chase.
You mentioned the twelve, twelve-dollar-an-hour minimum for our positions. Is that enough? There's a lot of chatter about fifteen dollars. Is there any analysis on, on that differential?
So, you know, we always want to pay our employees as much as that we can, but when, when we're talking about the fifteen dollars an hour, yes, we're, we're staying on top of that for sure. But right now, you know, we're not seeing that being enacted this year or even next. And so I think while, I mean, always increasing our starting rates for our hourly employees is a goal, we also want to make sure that, you know, we can sustain those raises, that we can do it in a very strategic way to where, you know, you, you just don't want to spend, I guess, too much money. I mean, we always want to spend as much as we can, but we also want to make sure that we are being conservative with this. And we're not seeing anything this summer that's going to be enacted with the, the changes with the minimum wage. And really, the likelihood that fifteen dollars would be over the next few years, and of course, Amy's more of an expert on this than I, but we are not going to see that, I would say, even in the next two or three. It's just, it's very costly for any business, especially school districts at this point, to be able to increase. So we, we definitely want to make increases for our employees, and we want to spend our money, but we also have to be fiscally responsible in school districts to make sure that we're doing the right thing and that we are, you know, allocating our money where it needs to be. So I think, you know, starting with twelve dollars this year, I, that is very competitive compared to the districts that Conroe competes with in this area. Amy, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I was just going to add that back when, the last time, because really, what we're talking about is a federal minimum wage increase. Right now, it's seven twenty-five an hour, the talk has been fifteen. The last time the minimum wage was increased, it was only about two and a quarter an hour difference, and that was done over several years. And so now that we're talking about essentially doubling minimum wage, it would, in theory, be done over a number of years because the impact on rural America, on rural Texas, and small businesses would be significant. So all that to say, you have time to get there, but every step you take to get closer to the fifteen certainly is going to help meet and exceed that new minimum wage whenever it actually does hit. There are a few bills in the Texas Legislature this year that would raise the minimum wage for specific jobs, like bus drivers and custodians. They haven't gone anywhere yet, but there is potential for them to pass, and we're, of course, keeping an eye on that, and will help support districts in whatever way is needed to make that happen. Anything that carries a fiscal burden like that usually is slow to be enacted, and so all that to say, you're headed in the right direction, and we're, we'll continue to support you as you keep going that way.
If I can add, I, hell, the mic.
Add a question.
Well, and, and they can't hear me, but, so maybe you can ask them this, Ms. Chase, but when we brought this idea forward to do twelve dollars, they felt like that was a, we were being aggressive in making that move. Like, we, we may be one of the few districts to make that, make that push forward, so.
Where were we before the twelve?
We had to make adjustments, I think, eleven, eleven oh five was, would have been, would have been our floor this year, after the raises would have been at eleven oh five. But we, so we jumped, I think it was.
What's the whole dollar impact?
Four, we jumped four, four different pay grades, I think, had to, had to scale up. I don't know what the amount, it would be under the administrative or auxiliary.
I can't entirely hear you, Dr. Knoll, but the increase to your pay grade one for auxiliary is a dollar and fifteen cents per hour. So it's just over ten and a half percent shift in that range.
I think that's what he was asking.
Yes. What's the total, ask them, they, they can't hear me.
What's the dollar, whole dollar impact? I got the percentage. You said the percentage is approximately ten percent.
A dollar and, yeah, it's a dollar and fifteen cent per hour increase to your starting pay rate for auxiliary.
It's probably where that two hundred and seventy thousand is there.
Correct. It went from, previously, you had a starting pay rate of ten dollars and eighty-five cents per hour, and now it's twelve dollars.
What's the effect on the budget, I'm sorry to cut you off, what's the whole-dollar cumulative effect on the budget?
It would be reflected in the adjustments for, and the general pay increase for auxiliary on the slide, right?
Okay, so make sure I'm correct. Going from the eleven dollars to the twelve-dollar minimum was a two hundred and seventy-dollar pickup, whole-dollar increase.
Correct.
In addition to whatever pay increase you give, because remember, the pay increase happens and then any adjustments that are needed, so it's kind of a, a package deal. But yes, so two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of adjustments are needed on top of your pay increase.
So help me on this math. If you were to go to fifteen dollars at some point in time in the future, it looks like, if, if we were to do it today, it'd be like an eight hundred and ten-dollar, thousand-dollar pickup.
No, it'd be significantly higher, because you'd have multiple pay grades above.
You would have to shift your entire.
Not just this, not just this front.
Correct, yeah. If you, if you make the floor go up that high, you're take, you're, you're not, when we took the floor here, we took about two pay grades had to go up.
I got it.
If you went to fifteen, you're taking twelve pay grades up.
Williams, what that does not include is the adjustment we made with custodians last year, that was about one point eight. So it would be about, about two million dollars of, you know, just, just off the top of the head, about two million dollars per dollar that would increase. So if we went to fifteen.
It's about six million.
Yeah, I calculated five point seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for TASB? And certainly, when Darren gets to the budget, we'll have more, we can have more conversation. Any other questions?
Thank you.
For Jennifer or Amy? Okay. Ladies, thank you for joining us. Next year, we look forward to seeing you here to join us, but we thank you for.
We hope so, yeah.
Being online tonight.
We very much appreciate your flexibility in accommodating us virtually. As you said, we hope to be back in person next year, but thank you so much.
All right, thank y'all.
All right. Y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Thank you. I know Mr. Hubert has to leave, y'all, or if y'all'd like to, like.
No, no.
Join us if you're comfortable, do whatever makes you happy.
Stay in the box.
Yeah. Look, I'm over here living in the corner, too, so I, I get it. Okay. All right, well, we'll shift then to item three, and we'll certainly welcome any comments or feedback right now that you may have over. Is there anything that you, that you would like for us to, to dig further into, to bring back to you? Percentage changes or specific positions that you need more information on?
I did, if we look at like our, our fill rates of those positions, do you think that those, those pay moves help us with any of our problems filling some of those positions?
Well, the, the pay move that we made mid-year with custodians absolutely changed the game. So we were at fifty and sixty vacancies all year. That pay move that we made, now we have a line of people waiting for the positions.
For real?
For real. So it absolutely made a difference. So I think, I do, I do think that we kind of proved that there is a, there is a floor that has to be met for people to take those jobs. And to, to Jennifer and Amy's point, there is, there are benefits to working for the school district, certainly, but there is a bottom line of you have to make enough money to pay your bills. And I think we've gotten there now with our floor to, to get to that level. There's room to continue to improve that, certainly, but it's a, it's a step process, you know. When, when you look at last year, our, our starting pay was in the tens. Next year, we'll be in at twelve. That's, that's a nice, that's a nice move, right? And we keep working it. Anything else? Okay, well, we will now hand it over to Mr. Rice and Mrs. Garza to talk about our preliminary budget.
Yes, good evening, members of board and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to present the second installment of the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two preliminary budget. As we're all aware, the legislature is currently in session, and, you know, we're following several bills, you know, right now, and we'll talk about them in, in a moment. You know, the, we're very early still in the budget process. The budget is very fluid, so we're still able to make any adjustments that we see that comes out of the legislative session. So here's our legislative update. As we said previously, both the House and the Senate budgets completely fund House Bill Three. House Bill Three is the new state funding formula. We refer to it now as House Bill Three. However, there are a few bills that are called cleanup bills. The main ones, House Bill fifteen twenty-five. It does cleanup of the S C T E calculation, S C C, S C E, and C C M R calculation. The one that we're really concentrating on is the fast-growth allotment calculation. We still qualify for the fast-growth allotment, however, their cleanup bill changes the way they calculate it. Currently, under the current plan, we would receive about fifteen million dollars a year in fast-growth allotment. Right now, that's decreasing to seven point five based on the new calculation that they have, so we're watching that one very closely. The second bill we're looking at is House Bill thirty-four forty-five, and that is the fund balance bill. You know, we've heard the state talking about, you know, fund balance for years. Well, this is their, their stab at trying to, what they call get it under control. They're going to limit cash on hand or unobligated funds, that's what we call our unassigned fund balance, to one hundred and ten days of operating expenses. Right now, our fund balance falls in about a hundred and fifty-three days of operating expenses. If you remember, well, for our new board members, in the first report, we were required to have a minimum of ninety days of, of unassigned fund balance. So they've made the window between ninety and a hundred and ten days is where they're thinking that we should fall. So in my conversations, you know, with, with different groups, they're, they're concerned with that because there are numerous districts that have over a hundred and ten days. And what, what the penalty for being over a hundred and ten days is going to be, we, we do not know. You know, I've, I've seen things as far as they're going to require you to reduce tax rates. They're going to require you to, to, to use that to fund your budget, stuff, stuff like that. So we're, so we're really watching that bill also. Both of those bills that I just talked about have been voted out of committee, and now they're working through the legislature for, for everybody to talk about. So some of the unknowns we have is the funding for virtual school. As y'all know, we just hired our virtual academy principal last month, still looking to see how the virtual school is going to be funded. And then really, the big question is how is the S R two and the S R three funding going to flow through to districts? And we have a whole slide that, that I'll talk about that in a minute. Enrollment, that's a real, that's a real good question. Where are we going to, where are we going to be next year? And then COVID nineteen, what is, what is COVID going to look like next school year when we get there? I would like to say, I am saying we have enough in the budget to handle COVID nineteen, but just what is, what is our, our school going to look like next year when we come back? So now looking at the potential S R funding. So S R or the CARES Act that we might be more familiar with. In S R one, the school district receives six point five million dollars. But I think y'all might recall that right off the top, the state decreased our ADA to make it a net zero increase for school districts. However, with the S R two funding that was passed this past December, based on the calculations that, that we have done, it looks like we should receive about twenty-seven point nine million dollars off of S R two funding. In S R three funding, based on the same calculations and as we understand it, our funding allocation should be sixty-two point four million dollars. We are anticipating the, the state to take some of those funds, you know, back. But it's such a large amount of money, I don't think the state will be able to take all of it. So, so we're waiting, we should, Karen, is the next couple of weeks, we should be receiving information.
We should know more about S R three before we do S R two, because the requirement for them to send it out was only sixty days on S R three, whereas they had a year for S R two. So we'll know more about that large dollar amount before we will, the twenty-seven point nine.
And, and we started very preliminary, I mean, very preliminary, you know, conversations, you know, on how to start having a plan for, for spending and allocating those funds moving forward.
I was in Austin last week, and I had this conversation with our Montgomery County delegation about, particularly with how it happened with S R one and the changes we would like to see in S R two to get more of that money without a corresponding cut in the other rest of the formula. So they are open to that conversation.
And, and just to be clear, like, we're seeing some other school districts, you know, already talking about spending that money, and they're talking about their pay raises for teachers and spending S R three money to do that. We don't, in, in this budget, you're not seeing us spend this money for those raises or anything, because we don't know we have that yet. So, you know, we're not, and I wouldn't be surprised, once again, like, if we, once this comes out, we might get down the road here a few months from now, and it wouldn't surprise me to see other districts come out with very large and aggressive raises based on this money. But it's two-year money, it doesn't last forever. We've, we just saw the districts do this two years ago, and we sort of held our normal pace, and it's worked out for us. I would anticipate us wanting to follow that same path, but I would just say, don't let that surprise you. We, we read an article today about another district, you know, potentially looking at six percent. They're talking about spending the S R money to do it, and so you're going to hear more conversation about it.
Yeah, and, and we've heard, we've heard, you know, out there that the state's looking at, sure enough, the TRS active care plans, the TRS retirement plan, using those funds to sure those up, because they're both, you know, through their formulary and, you know, they're.
Underfunded.
They're underfunded. So they might use some of those funds to make them more actuarially sound.
Good. That'd reduce the liabilities on our balance sheet, indeed.
Yes, sir. So we've announced, start with taking a look at the major components that drive the budget, and they begin with our two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two budget objectives, and they include to meet the needs for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year. This year, we are opening Hope Elementary. And they include to meet the needs for the 2021-2022 school year. This year, we are opening Hope Elementary. Once again, we want to provide a competitive compensation plan, and we just saw that from Tasby. And we want to continue to meet the needs as outlined in House Bill 3. This year, we'll be beginning our reading academies. And y'all have heard several presentations on our teacher incentive allotment. And then we also want to provide continued support from the mitigation efforts against the spread of COVID-19. As always, we like to compare our tax rates with the other Houston area school districts. You can see Conroy ISD in the red. Our current tax rate is at $1.2125. The light green districts, those are our peer districts. Not only do we compare to them financially, but also academically. And the dark blue columns are the local Montgomery County school districts. Talking about fund balance, this is our fund balance analysis, and, and our goal is to maintain an unassigned fund balance in the range of 20% to 25% of our budget. Currently, our, our unassigned fund balance is at $153.7 million. 20% of our target, we would have available $38.3 million for the board to spend as, as they wish, if they, if you so well please. And then at the high end of our target, at 25%, that's about $9.4 million. And we are looking for, for a, a large increase to our fund balance this year, mainly coming from the money that we received from the county, the $20 million in CARES Act funding that we received from the county.
Sure, Ice, how many days is that equate to?
It's about 153 days.
153 on which ends? Current or low end? High end?
High end.
Where we are? Okay, so 27% is where? 153?
Yes, sir.
If they're saying you can have 110 days, and there's 365 days in a year, that's 30%. So we're underneath 30%, which would be 110 days. Am I doing something wrong math-wise?
What kind of days are we talking about?
Well, in the, in the bill you mentioned earlier, it said that max you could carry in fund balance was 110 days of operating expenses, which would, I would assume would account for your entire budget. Is that correct, or you got to take out debt service out of that?
Yeah, it would not include your debt service.
So it depends on what our debt, our, our true operation costs?
Correct.
Okay, all right, okay.
And, you know, part of, I believe, what, what you will see moving forward with the budgets, we'll make the recommendation to move some of the funds from our fund balance over to our capital maintenance fund. You know, that is an area that, you know, will allow us to have future debt avoidance by having it there. It also would allow you the opportunity that, for a future budget, if you felt like you needed it, you could go get it and bring it back into a future budget. So I think we'll be bringing forward a recommendation for that, maybe this month, in this month's board meeting. Yes.
Just kind of give you a, a real short history of our enrollment trend since 1920. In 1920, we ended the year at 64,799 students. As y'all all are aware, for the past 15 years, it was 1,500 students a year. You can write it on paper, they were coming. So we budgeted in 2020-21 for 66,298 students. What we did not anticipate was COVID-19 and the effect it would have on our enrollment. When we opened school, at our snapshot date, we're at 64,565 students, actually a decrease from the previous year. However, this year, we've already grown 809 students. As of yesterday, our enrollment was 65,374. So for our, our budget for 2021-22, you will see us using 66,298. And, and you'll see, it would not surprise me, and, and Dr. Noel and I have talked, if we hit 67,000, should we just, this is the one thing we just don't know where we're going to be for next year.
Dr. Upshaw just shared with me, I'll just share with you all, we started our kindergarten and pre-K roundup this week, allowing enrollment. We have enrolled, this is for next year, but in two days, we've had 886 students enroll for next year, which is a record number for us, number of kids potentially coming. And so our numbers are off, but, you know, today was the largest we've ever been in Conroy ISD in our history. You know, it's 66, 65,374. So we're, we're bigger today than we've ever been, and that's just going to continue.
How many of that 65,374 is still remote?
About 11,000. So it's about 16% or so are still remote. Now, we've, we've done surveys and, you know, to see what people are thinking for next year. Chris can probably analyze, has probably analyzed that better than I have, but, you know, I believe it's, we expect 75% of those to return with about, you know, 3,000 or so that may either want to look at our virtual school or may look at some other option if, if our virtual school is not an option.
What's the, what's the number? I guess you haven't anticipated a number of a virtual school attendance. And is there a number that we're, is there a number that we need to reach in order to make it?
Yeah, so
Yeah.
What we'll be doing with the virtual schools, we, we've built in, I believe, 15 teachers into the budget. If we end up with a higher enrollment than that, they'd be kids coming from a campus, so we'd just be moving teacher allocations in. We can pull it off. I know Mr. McCord sent me some math yesterday, that if we started, let's say, with grades 3 through 9, what did you, what did we anticipate there, Chris? About 900?
I believe around 700 or 900.
Yes.
We've been projecting somewhere in the 110 to 140 per grade level ratio at this point, based on the survey. We're going to do another survey here.
Man, that's 12,000 kids.
Yeah, a, a lot of those 12,000 will come, I mean, we did that survey, and we know that more than half of them have said if COVID's not an issue, we're coming back. Like, we'll, we will be in person. So that, the, the masses will come back automatically.
Didn't we see a higher number coming back this last nine weeks as well?
We, we went up about a percentage point this last nine weeks. So we're at 84% now. We opened the year at 60-something, right? 63, 64, somewhere in there. So we've gone up about 20 points throughout the year. Yes.
So looking at our attendance data, and I like to say this is probably the single most important slide we'll look at because this drives our revenues and our expenditures within the district. So for our enrollment data, as I said, we're going to use 66,298 for our enrollment, and we're going to use 94.2% again for our average daily attendance. Our certified property values, they're estimated to come in about 5% growth, and that will add about $2 billion to our property values, bring our total to $42 billion. And the impact on funding is minimal in the general fund because of House Bill 3 and the Robin Hood effect that we have on that. And we'll show that later in the presentation. But this is the primary source of revenue for our debt service fund. And, and also, this will provide the tax rate decrease that I'm fixing to show you that we're anticipating passing on to our, our taxpayers. So here that is our tax rate history. Currently, this year, we're at $1.2125. And very early, but we're anticipating somewhere around $1.19. It could be half a cent higher or half a cent lower. As y'all know, we will send all the numbers to TEA. They will actually verify and calculate that for us, and we won't know for sure till August. But we're anticipating right around $1.19, so about a 2-cent tax rate decrease. So that's, that's nice for our taxpayers.
Which is wonderful. May you go back to that if you would, like, that, you don't ever want to take for granted over a three-year period, a 9-cent tax rate decrease. Like, that's a very significant thing that, to pass along to our taxpayers. So that's, that's really great.
Just so y'all remember, House Bill 3 limits us to 2.5% growth within the, within our budget on the tax revenue side. And anything above 2.5% gets reduced in the tax rate. So that is where you see this tax rate reduction.
But we did make a promise, if you remember, those of you that were on the board at that point, and myself out speaking, we made a promise in 2019 that our tax rate would not go up when the bond passed. And, you know, we're now going to be at 4 cents lower than it was when that promise was made. So we've, we've kept our word.
So now that we've discussed the major components that drive the budget, mainly attendance, we will now look at the effect that they have on the budget itself, starting with our 2021-2022 funding estimate. Local revenue limited to 2.5% AV growth on the tax side. That will generate us about $10.1 million. However, right on the other side, state funding decrease based on Robin Hood and the way House Bill 3 works now, right off the top, that $10.1 million goes away, so net effect is zero from property value increase. Since we're staying the same with our enrollment, we're not going to see really any change in our state funding. We do have a slight decrease based on the new instructional facilities allotment. Last year, we had Stockton Junior High just starting, so we got a big bump with new instructional facilities. This year, we have Hope coming on, but the difference between the two is vast, so that is actually going to result in a decrease of about $1.85 million. Interest revenue, we're just not seeing rates make any kind of move, so we still need to adjust that down a little further by $1.6 million. TRS in kind, this is the same calculation that we have to see every year's required accounting entry that we put in there. Based on GASME rules, $2.5 million there for total estimated funding decrease of $950,000.
Darren, where do we capture that bond refinancing savings?
That is on the debt service side. This is, we're just talking general fund here today. That'll be in our debt service fund. See those. So now moving to the expenditure side of the budget, this is the general pay increase that we just saw Tasby present. If you look down at the bottom right, you will see that is $12,191,000 for the 3% across the board raise. And this is the proposed teacher hiring schedule. Once again, 3% general pay increase is $1,800 for all returning teachers. You can see the additional adjustments there by year, between year 6 and 18, and starting teacher salary of $58,500. Very strong position with our, with our teacher pay.
Oh, go back? I'm sorry. 1,800. How did we get that?
3%. That's 3%.
Oh, you did 3% of the, okay, the starting.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought we were looking at 3% of, okay. I misunderstood.
Was 3% on their, on the median midpoint, which is $57,300.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. So the same for other positions. It's always 3% on the midpoint. So some employees will actually get a little higher than 3%.
That's good.
So looking at our 2021-22 personnel additions, and these additions provide support at the campus level. That includes the opening of Hope Elementary. It is 34.75 new positions. That includes 21.75 teachers, four professionals, seven paraprofessionals, and two administrators. That's at a cost of $2 million. And then to support our campuses, we have 29 new positions, mainly in our custodial and bus driving, bus drivers. That's at a cost of $1.2 million for total payroll additions of about $3.3 million. So this is our projected expenditure budget increase for the year. The general pay increase, once again, 12.19 million. Additional personnel, 3.3 million. The retention stipend that, that Dr. Noel talked about earlier, $6 million. Other expenses, including utilities, insurance, and supplies increased to $520,000. The capital maintenance fund transfer via fund balance that we discussed at the last board workshop, that will reduce the budget requirements by $10 million. The TRS, the offset to the other entry, $2.5 million for total expenditure increase of $14.51 million.
And Darren, that, the $6 million for the retention stipend, that can be adjusted mid-budget. We just need to have a line item in the budget for retention stipend, and then the board would have, they could adjust that up or down
Yes, sir.
in the moment at their, okay.
And does that work out to about 500?
A $5 million for $675 in employee. I would say this is going to be closer, you know, in the neighborhood of 750.
Okay.
Wow.
So it'll be a, a good bump for our employees. So just, just to remind you all about the capital maintenance fund, it was established to support the 2019 bond referendum. Actually, you know, that will save us on, on tax increases in, in our bond program. And the board established a financial plan to fund the capital maintenance fund, about $50 million. Currently, that fund has been funded up to $30 million with $10 million budgeted in this year, and for a total of $40 million. So we're recommending using $10 million of our fund balance to go ahead and finish out that $50 million to get it to what the, the board promised. And then that will free up $10 million that we can put back in the budget and help offset those costs. So I just wanted to explain that to y'all one more time, what, what that does for us.
And that's, that doesn't include the, the amount that we may be transferring
Correct.
this month. So we'll actually be overseeding the
Yes, yes.
placing more in there than we even promised, which is great. I mean, that's a
Good.
So this is looking at the revenues and expenditures together. On the revenue side, we had a beginning revenue of 582.45 million. We had an estimated revenue decrease at this time of $950,000. For estimated total revenue of $581.5 million. On the expenditure side, beginning expenditures of $576.99 million. Our total estimated expenditure increase of $14.51 million give us an estimated total expenditures of $591.5 million. We are recommending that we use $10 million of the COVID relief funding that we received in the current year to help the budget, and that will bring us into balance with the budget. So what's next in the budget process? We still need to finalize our revenue. Of course, the legislature's still in session, so we'll be following that. Tax rate, certified values won't come out till July 25th, and then the state will calculate our, our tax rate for us. We need to finalize our expenditures with the personnel compensation recommendation, and then work with our campus and departments on their expenditure needs. Future board meetings and public hearings, June 1st is the next board workshop that I have scheduled to present the budget. That'll give us time to work through the legislative session and bring that information to y'all. July 14th, we'll be presenting to the district level Planning and Decision Making Committee for their recommendation. July 20th, we'll actually bring it to the board meeting that evening to discuss the budget. August 3rd, we'll have our first public hearing. August 17th, we'll have a public hearing before the board meeting, and at the board meeting, we'll ask the board to adopt the budget and the tax rate at that time.
Thank you, Darren. Any questions or comments you'd like to see worked on?
Okay, I'm very pleased.
Thank you, Darren. All right.
Good job.
We'll move to item four, receive the 2021-2022 health plan design and premium update. And as Mr. Moore mentioned, this is kind of the other side of the pay raise, all right? There's the, the piece that we're trying to offset.
Yeah, and I will have, I'll allow them to introduce themselves. I have Mr. Nick Long and Maggie Parker. They're both with Gallagher. They're our benefits insurance consultant. So if y'all want to just tell a little bit about yourselves to the board?
Yes, thank you. I'm Nick Long from, from Gallagher. I lead the public sector team throughout Texas. We work with a lot of the major school districts around town and around the state, and are glad to have the opportunity to work with y'all.
And my name is Maggie Parker. I'm also with Gallagher Benefits. I help lead the accounting that provides service to the Conroy ISD. Thank you for letting me see you.
Darren, if you would, could you just remind us of our timeline of when we selected Gallagher and what, how they've, how long they've been on board with us now, just to kind of refresh the board on that selection?
Yeah, it's been, it's been, I'm, I'm trying to remember, is it November?
It's been, it's been a fun ride.
About November.
About, yeah, yeah. It's been, it's been about six months, and we've been very pleased with the progress that, that we've made with Gallagher. You know, they, they've come in, they hit the ground running, you know, first off the bat. You know, we had, you know, some bids to get out. Right now, we're working on the onsite clinic, and we're going to talk about the clinic, you know, further in the, in the board meeting. And, you know, they've just hit the ground running and doing a good job for us. So we're, we're proud to have.
Appreciate it.
So just kind of the agenda for this, this part, we're going to look at our current benefit plan design and our funding levels, where we're currently at. Then we'll take a look at our cash, our, our cash process plan performance that y'all normally see each month, and what our fund balance is in the self-funded plan. We really have a robust fund balance in there. And we have some, some recommendations for y'all, and we want y'all's feedback on some of the uses of that fund balance moving forward. Then Gallagher will give, give their plan evaluation, the implementation of the Core Trust PBM, and any recommended benefit plan design changes, because unfortunately, this year, we are looking at in the neighborhood of almost 14% increases if we stayed status quo within the plan. But Gallagher is bringing options for us this evening to, to look at, to, to lower that, that potential increase. And then based on their recommendations, we have our comparative plan design recommendations out that we'll be able to see the changes from year to year, so that y'all can see that visually with our comparative, the TRS plan, so we can see all those together and see where we're at. So with that, I'll just start with our, our current year funding levels. This includes the board contribution of $446 per employee per month for our plan. And, and just so y'all know, for, for our new board members, our plan has 5,500, over 5,500 employees in it, and over 9,500 lives in our plan. So this, it's, it's a big deal. It's, it's funded right now at about $52 million. So this is, this really is a, a big deal as we look at these benefits for our, for our employees. Current funding levels, as I just said, is right about 50. Current funding levels, as I just said, is right about 52 million dollars. Last year, we also had a 9% increase. We were right at a 9% increase. Medical inflation and everything was in the 8% to 10%. We fell right in the middle at 9%. 5.4% of that increase was handled with premium increases, and you can see those increases for each area. They're in red up at the top where we had to increase premiums last year, and that ate up about 5.4% of that increase. And the rest was plan design changes. That accounted for about 3.6% of that 9% increase. So here are the plan design changes. The first column in green is the TRS Active Care Primary Plus. That's kind of our benchmark plan that we kind of compare ourselves to. The column in the pink is the Charter Kelsey Plan. The green is the United Nexus ACO Tier One Plan. That is with Memorial Hermann. The tier two is to United's wide-open basic network called the Choice Plan. And then in the blue is our high deductible plan. And you can see the changes there in red that we made last year to make up that 3.6% change in our plan.
And Mr. Rice?
Yes, sir.
Out of all the employees that are in our plan, what would you say the majority are in? Which one of these plans?
Our largest plan, if we look back, if you look back in the bottom left-hand side, the United Charter, which is Kelsey, has about 1,800. The United Nexus Plan is our largest plan at 3,200 employees.
All right, thank you.
Can you go back one second, Mr. Rice?
This one or...
Or here?
Right here? Yes, sir.
So that's both the, both of the Nexus plans?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That includes both Nexus, tier one and two. Yes, sir.
Where are the percentages by tranche, employee only? What are, where are those percentages?
Employee, employee, we fund approximately, this year, 59%. The district contribution funds 59% of the revenues.
Participation in each one of them.
Oh, what is the percentage?
It's in the lower left-hand side. Looks like it just got cut off on the left.
I can't see it.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have the exact percentages.
Okay, so I would imagine most of our employees, employee only?
Yeah, I mean, it's 3,500 or so are employee only, it looks like. The top line and the bottom, the bottom chart left there...
The vast majority are employee only, yes, sir.
It's 13, so if you look at that chart, it says United Charter, and the number right below it says 1346. That's the employee only count.
Oh, you don't have it. I got you.
Yes, sir. I apologize for that getting cut off.
Yeah, we need a long, we need a wider chart there. See the headers.
I can fit it on there, I just didn't...
Yeah.
I've just looked at it so many times, I just...
Okay, I got you now. Good. Thank you.
So this is our current year plan performance through March. Total revenues, 31.3 million dollars. Currently, total expenditures, about 30.1 million dollars. So our revenues over expenses, on a cash basis, 1.2 million dollars. So we're tracking just about where we would think we would be with anticipation, you know, of the predictable high summer utilization in our plan that we traditionally have. So we're tracking very well right now where we think we will be moving forward. So one of the things we're going to talk about this evening, and that's in the next presentation, is participation at our wellness centers. If y'all remember in our presentation, it takes about 550 visits to just break even providing that to our employees. We're only averaging about 327 per month. So, you know, we're looking at, since we're at the bid...
We had two centers, and now we have one center, right?
Yeah, we've always had one center, and we've tried to have satellite centers, you know, come up that Memorial Hermann had a new doctor start, and they just never took off.
Right.
We've never had employees go to it.
Okay.
So those have all come and gone, and so we still have our one that we actually administer and we pay for.
Right.
We pay about 650,000 dollars a year to run that plan. And we'll get into that in much greater detail in the next presentation.
And that 650 is included in this number?
Yes, sir.
In these numbers?
Yes, sir.
And you said 550 visits?
Yeah.
Per month.
Per month, yes, ma'am.
Per month.
And what happens is, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but when we hit 550 to break even, that is also at the point where we have to hire another provider. So then it just moves that, it's like we're always chasing break even in the plan. So once we hit 550, then we have to bring in another provider because of all the time slots, and then we're always trying to chase break even. So...
And is that provider an MD or nurse practitioner?
Nurse practitioner.
Okay.
Why are we looking to break even?
Well, we're just trying to gauge whether it's a viable plan, and that's taking into account the benefit that we think is providing our employees by making it where it's timely, it's, you know, our times are open up for teachers late and early. When are we utilizing, you know, we're getting, supposedly getting teachers back to the classroom quicker, so there's that.
So how are you quantifying? What's the...
It's just market averages that they, that, I don't know how you, you really don't quantify it, it's just a market...
So it would be, you would use a model based on deferred care. So each one of these visits, 327 of them a month on average, we would assume that that person would go seek the care somewhere else. Through the market average rate of, say, 88 dollars for a primary care visit, 120 dollars for a specialist, 240 for urgent care. And so you can, you can estimate the numbers, and then you take the, you take the amount you've spent on it, apply it back, and that's what you deferred out of your, out of your actual healthcare spend. And so the question is, where do you want to deploy those dollars? Do you want to deploy them to the clinic, or do you want to use the 600 something thousand dollars to enhance the benefits in other ways that maybe people will find more valuable? And I think that the question is, at this point, with the visits being so low, is that clinic a real benefit to the employees as a whole? And the other problem that you guys suffer is just geography. There is no place in ConRISD to put a clinic that will work for everybody, right? It's just too, it's too large, and the travel times are too gray. And so you get into a problem of where is that money best spent? And we have some suggestions on where to redeploy that money, so that you're still achieving the goal of serving the employees, getting them quick and accessible care, and getting them back to work and healthy faster. So I think it's about where do you want to spend that?
And we have a whole nother presentation that will address the clinic, and we can answer these questions in more depth in the next presentation.
That clinic question is, that's still baffling to me. Somewhere in my mind, I'm still, I'm at a loss, because it's a benefit in understanding we understand, we should understand that it's at a cost to us. You're trying to figure out viability based on a model and an average savings if someone were to go elsewhere and seek care as opposed to using our clinic. But aren't the ones who are most needed at that clinic, who are taking advantage of it, at the expense to a certain degree of the entire pool, right? And now we're essentially saying, if we close it, we take that and redistribute it, right? So it's going to hurt those ones that are more so in need of that clinic, more so, but the general pool, the general population will benefit...
So I see, I see what you're saying. I would say that not everybody can, even the people that need it, not everybody can use it because of the location and just the, because there's a lot more than 327 people that need that, those services. And I think if you redeploy that in a way that is, that could serve a broader geographic area, I think you would see the use go up without necessarily, you might even spend more money, but you would decrease the cost of the overall plan and serve more people.
Okay. All right, I'll wait and see what you got.
So speaking of the fund balance in our plan, you can see we have a very healthy fund balance in the plan at about 6.8 million dollars at the end of last year. So we feel very comfortable with that, and that is a fund balance that is after taking into account the liability of the runoff that we have to account for. So we're in very good shape with our fund balance.
And once again, Darren, can you explain, because I asked this question earlier today, can you explain why we saw such a large jump from last year to this year?
Yes, when we were, when we were at Etna, they were, their actuaries had calculated our runoff to be in the neighborhood of 6 million dollars. When we switched from Etna to United, we actually only realized about 2 million dollars worth of runoff. And so that difference, you know, we had that liability on our books, you know, for the 2 million dollars. So that put 4 million dollars back into our unassigned fund balance that we took off with that liability when it, when it's, when it's come off. And United's liability that they, that we booked this past year was right about 2 and 1/2 million dollars where it should be, so we feel very comfortable.
And to be clear, this fund balance is not, this is not associated with our other fund, our unassigned fund balance for the district. This is separate.
This fund balance is actually our employees.
Right. This is their money.
Their money contributions.
Correct.
What is our objective on this fund balance? What's our goal? What are we trying to keep a fund balance of? What's our target?
Probably 2 and 1/2 million at least.
Yeah, around...
Got to cover that runoff.
Yeah, I think 2 and 1/2 million is right, a solid fund balance for the plan.
Okay.
So now, moving into the plan evaluation, and I'll let Nick take it over from here.
Great, thank you. And so this chart's really showing the different plans and how, oh, there's, sorry, it's showing the total plan and how it runs, and the particular part to kind of zero in on is just how it's running on a kind of month-to-month basis. So as you're flowing through this, I'll take over, as you're flowing through the amounts, it's important that this right here drives what we do our initial evaluation off of. So we're getting the, getting the plans, getting where the plan is trending out, and then building the initial renewal. And so as we built the initial renewal, it came out to be about a 14% renewal. And granted, this is extremely conservative. This is using a 5% load for potential increase of COVID claims. And the thought behind that was, last year, claims were artificially repressed because people didn't go to the doctor. A lot of those knee surgeries, hip replacements, things like that, got deferred. And so we would expect that especially this summer, that you're going to see those happen. And so we took a conservative stance on that. And then we used a rather conservative trend number, which will fall off as this matures forward, and this is without renegotiating the fixed costs, which we're in the process of renegotiating right now with your current carrier. And so the first thing we did is take a look at this, and obviously, this is very high. And we went to go attack the different areas where we knew we could trim some fat out of there. And the first area that we looked at was your pharmacy contracts. And so you guys are currently with Optum, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of United Healthcare, and that's your PBM, your pharmacy benefit manager. And so inside those contracts, they have contracts with Merck and Pfizer and all the big drug companies. And so what they essentially do is they go get a contract with the drug company, then they sell you the drug at a different price, and they make the money in the middle. It's the spread. And so we sought to reduce that spread and to recoup as much in rebates as possible. In your current contract, there was opportunities to do that. And so the first thing we did is go and attack that and reduce the pharmacy cost by about 20%. And by doing that, we squeezed United's profit in the middle. We got more back in rebates, we paid less for the drugs. And so simply, the same PBM, everything's the same, plan design, but we squeezed some of the profit out of the middle of that. And the way we did that is we sought better contracts. And we got those contracts by joining a coalition, which is a group of other employers that approach Optum together. You guys still pay your own claims, you have your own everything, you have your own plan design, you pay your own claims, you do all that, but you approach it as one united front of a couple million members instead of 10,000 members, and then the rates are better. And so that was the first thing. You can see that that had a significant impact, 5% overall, about 20% of the claims. And that's, that is no impact to the plan, that's just straight grabbing money from United out of the middle. And so that was kind of step one. And then we got it down to about a 9%. And then from there, we looked for other ways to make the plans a little bit more equitable, because if you saw those different plans earlier, the Nexus Plan, which has the most people, is by far running the worst. The other controlled plans are running significantly better, and they still offer extremely robust benefits. So we looked at ways to work in that, to reduce the cost down through the plan designs. And we made a couple of different recommendations, and to also keep the plan designs consistent with what TRS is offering. So the first change that we made, which brought this from 9 to 3.8, is to change the HDHP deductible from 6,900 to 7,000, so increasing it by 100 dollars. We are recommending maintaining the out-of-pocket max at unlimited. And then on the Nexus Plan, changing the tier one deductible from 1,500 to 1,750. The out-of-pocket max moves by the same amount, so that it keeps track with each other. The tier two deductible from 2,750 to 3,000, the out-of-pocket max moving at the same as well. And then on the copays, changing it to deductible and co-insurance on tier two. And the big reason, the difference between tier one and tier two, there's only one plan, so there's only one Nexus Plan. Everybody's in the Nexus Plan, but you get to make a decision. If you want to go to Memorial Hermann, you have lower deductibles and you have lower copays or copays. And if you choose, I don't want Memorial Hermann, you can go to the rest of the United network, but you will have a higher deductible, and you will have deductible and co-insurance instead of copays. So it's, you can choose at your point of service. So Monday, you could decide to go to Memorial Hermann, and you will pay the lower deductible. Tuesday, you could go to the rest of the facilities in the, in the United network. You don't have to tell anybody, you just, you make that choice at the time. And then the next plan is the Charter Plan. It's running by far the best. This is a Kelsey-only plan, so you have to stay within the Kelsey network. Obviously, smaller network, still extremely high-quality care, and the deductible would change from 1,200 to 1,500, co-insurance from 90% to 85. So still extremely rich benefits, richer than what's being offered other places. And then those get you to about a 3.8% renewal. On top of that, we're looking at, we're performing kind of two things right now. We're going after and working on rightsizing the administrative fees. We've, we have kind of, we've done a study, and we've shown this to United. Your administrative fees are the highest by member in town of any school district. And so we've, we've shown that and demonstrated that to United. You know, they're under no obligation to lower them, but we would hope, as a good partner and showing the benchmark data, that we can, we can negotiate that as well. And at the same time, we're recommending to go out to bid for the stop-loss. Stop-loss is a pure commodity, it's pure insurance that sits on top. It's our recommendation to bid that every single year, because it does not affect the employees in any way, it's just a way of protecting your plan internally, there's no disruption. It's a real commodity. And so we're going to bid on that. We already have the renewal back at 19.7. Our underwriters feel the renewal should have been closer to about a 9, so we feel that there's an opportunity there to reduce that as well, somewhere along the line to... So we, you know, we already have the worst-case scenario in right now at 3.8, and there's some opportunities to reduce that further. Also, on top of that, that 3.8 is with a very conservative load of 5% for COVID. And that is a one-time load, because we feel the high chance of claims being extremely high this summer and into next year. And that's just because of the, all the stuff that was repressed last year. So we've taken an extremely conservative approach and got it down to the low single digits, but there's some still opportunities to do some work on some other stuff.
So, you know, just to sum up what Nick just said, we have room to improve what we're presenting here this evening, and I think working on those fixed costs when we, we hopefully bring this plan for your approval at the April board meeting, we will have a more robust and more premium-friendly plan when we come in April for the board meeting. So this is the recommended premiums that we have. Looking at the 3.8% increase that we would need to move on, on the revenue side, you can see those once again. The green, the first column is the TRS Active Care Primary Plus, that is where they are for 2021. The Kelsey Plan, you can see those increases for employee only, it would increase by 16 dollars. Employee and children, 58 dollars. Employee and spouse, 76 dollars. And employee and family would increase 90 dollars. For the United Nexus Plan, that increase would be employee only, 16 dollars. Employee and children, 60 dollars. Employee and spouse, 80 dollars. And employee and family, 98 dollars. And on the high deductible plan, it would be employee only, 6 dollars. Employee and children, increase 44 dollars. Employee and spouse, 50 dollars. And employee and family, by 70 dollars. Still, all those plans' rates are very competitive with what is currently with TRS, but we have not seen their, their plan designs yet for the coming year. So that will generate an additional $2.1 million. And, you know, required funding based on United's recommendation for these changes is $55,481,000. Increase there of 3.78% on the premium side. Now, looking at our plan designs, recommendations that Nick just spoke about, you can just follow down exactly what he said. And you can see those side by side for each one of the plans. Once again, Kelsey's in pink, the Charter Plan, United Nexus, which is Memorial Hermann. Tier 1 is in green, the Tier 2, the Choice Network, is in yellow. And then our High Deductible Plan is in blue. And you can see those. And those account for about 5.2% of the 9% increase that we're seeing right now with our conservative numbers.
I mean, this is the best option?
This is, this right now is a very conservative.
Worst case at this point.
We can't improve from this, I hate using word. But worst case, this is the, you know, right now, as we sit, this is the worst case. What we need to remember is we have things to, we have things to work on. Administrative fee negotiation that Nick and Gallagher is taking on to get that cost down. And then our, and then our stop-loss program, they're, you know, we're fixing to go out to bid, subject to that. That could be substantial savings in that program. So if we look at the next slide, it's kind of our cost reduction, just kind of what we talked about. You know, the COVID surge of 5% that they have built into our plan, I would like to use our fund balance to offset that. Put it at the end of the plan, let's see, because it might hit this summer. That surge might come this summer, and we have to use fund balance anyway. But what I'm thinking is, let's leverage our fund balance. We'll make up that difference at the end of the plan year if that surge does hit. And that way, that 5%, you know, we can take, we can take right off the top of these plan design changes. You know, just knowing that at the end of the plan year, we might have to have. And that 5%, I'm calculating about $2.6 million is what that change would be, that 5%.
And I guess we feel this is a responsible way of approaching it. The COVID surge is really a, it's a one-time deal, right? And that's what fund balance should be spent down for. And you are over-allocated in your fund balance right now. It is also possible, I mean, we took a conservative number. It is also possible that not all of it hits. And by putting it at the end, when that money comes through, it'd be, I guess, a separate budget item. When you bring it back to then release that funds, you may not need all that money. And so, I think that is a logical way of spending down some of this money or allocating it to keep the plans near where they need to be.
So Nick, not to put you on the spot, the planned administration fee negotiation and the bid, the stop-loss insurance, what, of that 9%, if we take 5% off and that gives us the four, how, what percent do you think those two negotiations might?
I would say another 2% of it. And then some of the plan design changes, I think, are needed in order just to spread the risk correctly as well. Because that Nexus Plan does consume a lot of the fund. And so if you looked at it, it is, I mean, it's by far the largest, but on an employee-to-employee basis, they are eating up a lot of the fund on their own. And so with some tweaks to that plan to make it a little bit more equitable to the other two, plus reductions in fixed costs and the 2.6, I think then you get to your flat where you need to be. So, without the premium increases on the employees.
So if y'all are comfortable with using the fund balance at the end up to about $2.6 million, I think we can, we really got some work to do, and we can bring. Of course, we'll run this by the Employee Benefits Committee. We have, we'll present this next Wednesday to that committee, get their recommendation, and then be able to bring a recommendation that I think this is a worst-case scenario, and that recommendation will be a lot better, you know, to look at at the April Board Meeting. Any other questions?
So we talked about the current center that we have at Oak Ridge Elementary.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Get to that, okay.
There we go. That's the next item, so we can jump right to it. Item five. Okay. Conroy ISD clinic report and benefit options.
Okay, just to discuss the Conroy ISD clinic, you know, as we said earlier, we're right now in the middle of the bid for administration of the clinic. We've been with Memorial Hermann for the past five years. The contract is due, so we're in the middle of the bid process with Memorial Hermann. And it is a perfect time to actually ask the question, is the Honsack Clinic still a viable benefit for our employees? So just in conversation, we had a group with the Employee Benefits Committee that's on the bid evaluation. And we started having the conversation with Nick and Bob and Maggie. And we were having that conversation, and they said, realistically, we would not recommend a district of y'all size to have a clinic. We would not have recommended to start a clinic just because of geographical size and the cost of running the clinic. And I said, well, what are other districts doing? And so we started talking, and HISD has made a contract with.
Next Level.
Next Level Urgent Care, where their employees get time slots in there, and they can, they've negotiated their copays in there. So now, they're, you know, as big as HISD is, their employees can go to these urgent cares, number one, treats it like a clinic. They get the services that they need, you know, at reduced levels. So we talked about that, and so that intrigued me a little bit, so we continued the conversation. So I wanted to bring that conversation to the board to see if the board is still, you know, wanting to continue with the clinic. Y'all can tell me, hey, we want the clinic, it's great, and that's all good. I just think it's important that y'all see alternatives to the clinic.
This alternative would be us partnering with someone that already has a clinic. Let's just say Ready Clinic, or someone that's got a clinic already.
That is one option.
As opposed to us owning the clinic, right?
Yes, sir.
We're outsourcing it. My question is, we have a contract with them, is it more so by service or by person, by visit? Or is it opposed to us paying a fat, flat fee or whatnot? So the clinic is already there, so their cost has sunk. I'm saying, if we're sending folks, are we negotiating a per-visit cost for us or a combination?
You could do it either way. So you could do it on a capitated basis, which is, you know, we're just going to pay X dollars per employee, and they use it however much you want. Or you could do it on a fee-for-service, where it's each visit, or you can even do it on a hybrid between the two. So there is, it's many different financial arrangements as you could come up with, those are viable. We can go to the next slide and kind of go over a couple of different options.
Yeah.
And to answer your question, so the clinic, the way it exists today, is a hybrid of that? You have some flat costs that you have to pay every month, whether one person walks to the door, $1,000. And then you also have per utilization charges that are charged on top of that. So depending on a person's individual needs, whether they're having lab or x-rays or other services like that, there's pass-through costs. So whether you open, whether, when the door opens or not, whether somebody walks in here today or not, there's a flat amount that you're paying, plus the charges, additional charges on top of that, based on the services.
So that'll lead us right into our next slide, and I'll let Nick just kind of walk through each one of these.
Yeah, I think that's a great example. So there's consumables that come out of that. So the $607,000, that's the fixed cost of running it, is that correct? And then there's consumables on top of that per visit as well. And so there is.
Oh, back up, back up, back up. So, I thought the $650 was our kind of total cost.
Yeah, so as the visits go up, the cost actually goes up as well.
On average, what is the cost to run?
$650, $650,000.
All-encompassing, $650,000. So that's what we got to work with?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And to be, if you go back, like, just to be clear, and I'm asking this maybe for my own education, but line two says the district spends in excess of $650,000. It's the employees, right? Like, this is not.
That's us.
This is from the general fund, or this is paid for from the?
Self-fund.
So this is from the employees, this is not taxpayer money, this is employee money into the plan. All right, just want to make that clear, because I see district, it kind of gives that implication that it's the district funding.
The plan spend.
Yes, this is the employees' money being spent.
You're correct.
And do we know or have any idea of why there's only 327 visits? Like, do we know it's because of geographical location, or are there other concerns?
I think there's several concerns. I think there's geography, there's just longstanding, people have their own doctors, and they continue to use their own doctors. Also, if you're in the Kelsey option, you have, you know, the entire Kelsey clinic system to go to. So there's a variety of different reasons, not just geography. I think a lot of it has to do with people have a relationship with their own provider already.
And there's some convenience pieces too, right? Like, we've all had kids, and my kids never got sick unless it was Friday night at 9 o'clock. Or, you know, whenever the doctor's office was closed, that's how it always happened. And so, you know, we don't have 24-hour access to our clinic. And so that affects it, I think, somewhat too.
I think another really important feature is the fact that during COVID, telemedicine became much more prevalent. And it existed for a couple of years, but a lot of people were hesitant to use telemedicine, whether it was a video consult or a phone consult with their doctor. But especially in the beginning stages of COVID, when a lot of providers and clinics were closed, the general public, people got a little bit more comfortable with using a telemedicine-type feature to access care. So a lot of those people started using it, saw how easy it was to be able to talk to your doctor, talk about your symptoms, just like you would in a general clinic setting, and have embraced using that more since COVID hit. So that may indirectly also be leading to the lower decrease in your average visits, because people are realizing there are other avenues that they can get similar care.
And in the interview process in the bid, you know, we interviewed both Memorial Hermann and Kelsey. And we, when we asked both of those groups, what is an alternative to an Honsack, they both said without question, telemedicine. I mean, that was telemedicine, it's going telemedicine.
I was on the board when we brought the clinic into being. I think, Deitrin, you might have been as well. But a lot of the discussion centered around at that time. And it's kind of like, we now have electric vehicles, we didn't have electric vehicles 15, 20 years ago. So I understand that times change, but we were having a lot of discussion around additional funds having to be put into the employee benefit plan, because the plan was not, was not totally taking care of itself.
Yes, sir.
And there were not a lot of alternatives to, if a teacher had a child and they were sick, the child was sick and the teacher had to stay home, you know, it was a much easier ask to go down to the school, to the clinic, get their child seen, if they could get their child, you know, taken care of, then they could get the teacher back to work. So we were trying to keep teachers in the classrooms, we were trying to keep our costs down as much as possible. And at the time, it was a good alternative to spend the capital dollars, open up the clinic. I agree 100%. From a geographical standpoint, we probably need five clinics. It was never going to be the one, but the number that I saw earlier, the 900 and something people that are using the clinic as their primary care, tells me that there's a need out there for, whether it's 300 a month and they're only coming once every three months, there's people that are using the clinic as their primary care.
May I just explain the 987? The clinic is the default place to put employees when they do not choose primary care.
Absolutely, I understand.
That is people who, you know, if I'm a.
I get it.
I could see myself as a first-year teacher.
Right.
I don't know.
I'm healthy, I don't need a doctor, right.
I don't even choose one.
I have a daughter like that.
It just defaults us.
Mom's been picking for me for two years.
So a lot of those are.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Never even visit a doctor.
So I like the idea, I mean, I don't like the fact that we've got some sunk costs in setting the clinic up. But I do like the idea of telemedicine. I've seen, my wife has used it at home, and I've watched, and it's kind of fascinating to me, but it worked for her. And I think, I think telemedicine has come a long way in a short period of time. My big deal, and you've kind of got it on here, my big deal with the clinic was, if it's the end of the month, and I can pay $40 to go see my doctor, or I can pay $10 to go to the clinic, I'm going to probably go to the clinic, because it's the end of the month and paid days and other five days. And so my one big passion is to make sure, whatever we do and put together, that we make it so that it's affordable for those that are going to use the service. Because, I mean, I have a daughter who's a teacher, and I know what teachers make, even though we just approved a great deal for our teachers, not all teachers get that. And not everyone in our district gets paid that. And so what I want to make sure is, for those of our employees who do rely more on those benefits, yes, they need a paycheck to live on, but they need that benefit to take care of their health and the health of their families. If we can make sure we can provide a benefit that's going to be as cost-effective, because I saw we had $30 and $40 copays, and that's good, but still, that's 30 or 40 bucks. You know, if you're making $500 every two weeks or something, that's still a lot of money. So that's my big deal, is that I just want to make sure, whatever we do, that, and I'm kind of telling the board my feelings, but my feelings are that we try to do something that's going to be very cost-beneficial, not only for the district. I think that's important, but it is the employees' money. It's not really the district's money. Yes, the district does kick in money to help supplement that. But the majority of it's coming from those employees that are using the program. And I'd like it to be as cost-effective for them as well, so that it does turn out to be a benefit. Because it, like Mr. Moore was saying earlier, you give them a 5% raise and you raise their healthcare insurance 8%, they didn't really get a raise, their paycheck went down. And so that's what I'm trying to avoid as well. I don't want to see that for any of our employees.
Mr. Sanders, very well put, and I think if you look at line two.
Yeah.
On that, we're looking to lower the copays.
I saw that.
$10 for both of those programs, at a very reasonable cost, you know, to the plan. So that is one thing. So Nick, if you want to continue.
Yes, and so I think we, our suggestion would be to look at a kind of multifaceted approach to fix, to use or redeploy that $650,000 across the plan to fix a variety of different areas. The first one on there is telemedicine at 100%. And so on every plan but the HDHP plan, because that's regulated by the IRS, that you can't go to 100%. On the other two plans, make it 100%, so you would call it $0 to do telemedicine. I think that's a huge benefit for people, that people, it's very easy to understand, and it really helped push people that way. And there's also potential cost savings for the plan. That's why that differential is so little on that page, because there's also a huge cost savings. If you can redirect a couple of urgent cares or a couple of ERs to telemedicine, it's a good win for the plan as well. Gives easy benefits. At the same time, lower the copays on the two copay-driven plans, the Nexus and the Charter, to $10. And those low copays mimic what you have at the clinic, and you can see that it's a pretty effective and cost-effective way for us to make the plan better. And then look for a couple of other programs. This is a, you know, there's just a variety of different programs out there. This Ready MD program's been put in by a couple other school districts. It's a telemedicine-driven program, monitoring a variety of costly, costly disease states, and really kind of adding another layer of benefits. And then at the same time, and the last one is out there, which we can't give a price to right now, but we would, this would need to be bid and really give people an opportunity across the area to bid on this, would be creating a preferred urgent care network across the area. And this would be negotiating rates, it might be with one provider, it might be with multiple, you know, just depending on how it works and how we get the deal structured. That would run through the normal health plan, and we would come up with a preferred urgent care rate for them as well. It might be a capitated deal, it might be a fee-for-service deal. But there would be then a different tier for the preferred urgent care networks. And the real advantage behind that, we would try to negotiate the rates so that it would basically cover itself, reduce copay, longer hours, they would have night hours, usually those go till 9, 10 o'clock at night. They would also have weekend hours. And so it's filling the gaps for when those $10 copays aren't really an option as well, because obviously, doctor's office closes at 5 or 6 o'clock anyway. So this would bridge the gap later and give weekend coverage at the same time. And so it would kind of be a plan that would hit it everything on kind of multiple different levels to use that money.
What happens when this comes, there's a delta between that $650 and those other three tranches, and that's the largest piece for the urgent care piece? What happens when that comes in, assuming it comes in, when y'all do the computation of how you structure the agreement, that's significantly less than the $650, do we, what do we do with the excess?
The excess would go into the fund balance, and of course, that would be part of it that we'd look at in terms of redeploying that fund balance to lower the overall premium.
Okay, good, very good.
And to, you know, to Mr. Sanders' point, when the clinic was created, that was before we had an urgent care on every corner too.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, that's another piece of the world that's changed since we started that clinic. Now, you know, there are so many, and they're spread out through everybody's neighborhood, which is, does provide a level of convenience, I think, for our staff. Because the other thing to remember too is, all of our staff doesn't live in Conroy ISD. Some of them live down in Houston, or Saffire, or Katy, they're driving in here. So our clinic is not necessarily an option for them on a Saturday, where if we had a contract with one of these urgent care companies that have clinics spread all over the region, it might give them a benefit as well.
I'm glad you guys thought of this. That's pretty good.
It seems to me like there could be a benefit, too, when somebody was traveling out of the region.
Potentially.
I mean, if they're on vacation somewhere else in the state and they can find an urgent care that's part of that network and get those benefits.
That and the telemedicine is, of course, available.
Therefore.
As well.
I've never done it.
Now, I might know, when is video, when are they going to be allowed to do video medicine in Texas?
They can now.
Oh, they can right now.
Yeah, that was changed with the last legislature session.
So are we seeing that?
Yes.
It is becoming more and more popular to use the video sessions as well.
I mean, because because we saw some demonstrations of that, and it's really pretty snazzy.
I helped my mom with a video console two weeks ago. She's 78 years old. I was like, we got this, Mom. I got, come on. And she was like all excited. She did it.
Oh, good.
So it's fairly easy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, really, what we've done within the in the bid process, the the contract for the management of the clinic was up at the end of May, if I'm not mistaken, I just can't remember off the top of my head. We have got with Memorial Hermann, and we have extended, we're working on extending that contract. They have agreed verbally to extend that contract to the end of August. So that gives us time to work on options.
Good.
And and we can work on these options, and we can bring them forward to the board later this summer to just really see if this is something that, but I wanted to get in front of y'all, get y'all's feedback, see if this is something y'all would like to to look at moving forward.
And I think the stop loss, I think there'll be some savings there that are created. Absolutely.
Any other questions tied to any of the benefits conversations? Okay, let's, let's take a five minute break as we transition our speakers here and give us a chance to get a break, and then we'll come back for our last item. That'll be okay. Go ahead and we'll come back together here. We good? All right, we'll move on to our final item of the evening, item six, House Bill Three, Board Adopted Goals and Plan Process. So we have Dr. Upshaw and Mr. Colson tonight to share with us about our board adopted goals. I think it was mentioned at a previous board meeting that this conversation would be coming, and in the upcoming board meeting, we'll be asking you to adopt goals. So we wanted to just take a little bit of time tonight in this more conversational setting to explain to you that process more. So, you know, the night of the board meeting, when you're understanding the goals, you'll you'll see how we got there and why. And that's really what we're going to share tonight. We'll try to move through it. We understand that it's, you know, getting a little late, so we'll try to move through it fairly quickly. But we'll turn it over to Dr. Upshaw.
Thank you, Dr. Noel, members of the board and Dr. Noel. So the port, this portion of tonight, in our workshop, we're going to be addressing the House Bill Three requirements. So in February, you received training from Region Service Six Center, talking about some of these goals. So we're going to look at the requirements for two of the two areas. So the state requires that we look at two areas, which are early reading and math, which will compromise of two of our goals, and then our college, career, and readiness, military readiness. So looking at the first portion of the plan components and the development goals, we're looking at early childhood literacy and math. And we all know that although we're going to start in third grade, the journey does not start in third grade. The journey starts at the best practices that include from pre-K to kinder to first and to second. So what we're going to be sharing with you is what that would look like in aggregated data to move that third grade reading and math goal. And also, just a quick reminder that looking through this also gave us some information about those diagnostic tests and reading with House Bill Three on how to make sure we were implementing systemic phonemic and phonics awareness program. And in college and career readiness, Mr. Colson will help us with that.
Thank you. The other portion is the college, career, military readiness, and we've talked about this before. It is part of House Bill Three, and our goal, by the time a student graduates from high school, that they will demonstrate that they are college ready, career ready, or ready to enter the military. And some of the components of it, first is the college ready, and to demonstrate that, they would have to successfully complete one of the data-driven instruments, SAT, ACT, take an AP class, dual credit courses, and demonstrate proficiency in that. And the logic being that performance on those tests successfully equates to a grade of C as a freshman in a first semester class, C or better. The second one is career ready, and that's demonstrating proficiency on one of over 230 industry-based certificates that are TEA-approved, that our students would take, or for a special education student graduating on an IEP, demonstrating that they're work and remorse ready. And the third component is military ready, and that is actually enlisting in the military and attending boot camp.
So when we look at these goals, each of the three goals that we're going to present to you tonight, just the baseline and background information like Dr. Noel said, is really us looking at our current status, where we're at, and then projecting to the future. We're also going to look at subpopulations. So you're going to notice on some of our preliminary data, there's a non-applicable or NA stated, because we don't have 25 or more in that subgroup to be able to gather that data. That's the same kind of accountability rating that's applied to our our district accountability. So these targets are targets to look for in today and for the next five years. Right? So although that will come back in April 20 to give you some recommendations on those goals for you to adopt and give us feedback, we would want to still look at those on an annual basis to just kind of see how we performed and what we set forth for each other. And our our board goals for for us are goals to show each progress and alignment with each plan, but not only the plan for us as a district, but those also for the campus. So what we set for the district and make these important, then will also be reflected in our campus improvement plans. So let's first look at, just to look at what the charts will look like. So this is the first goal, which would be early childhood literacy proficiency. And you can see here the subpopulation codes, there's a lot of acronyms there. So I'm just going to give you a couple of seconds to look at what those acronyms are. For those of us that see those all the time, we also had to look them up. So the first goal would be to increase the percent of third grade students that the score meets grade level above on star ready, on star reading from 54% to blank by August 2025. You're like, what? We're at 54%? So let's kind of recalibrate here. Okay. When we come to you every time to talk about star performance, when we come for accountability reports, we always talk about the approaches level. As a district, we are saying approaches is not the level we want to look for. We want to look at the higher level. So we are setting our goals at the meets level. So the approaches level is when students show some understanding of the material, and the state is saying, you're good enough to pass. Right? The state says at approach, you pass. At the meets level, it shows that a student has a solid understanding of the material and is ready to go on. So when we were conversing with our HB3 team behind the scenes, this was something that was said to us when we were talking about this. This is not about who passed for us in CIST. It's about going into the next grade level to take on the next grade level content. So that's why our goals are going to be at the meet level. And then, of course, the master's level, when the student shows a strong understanding of the course content and is like at the highest level, usually scoring 85% or higher on the score, on the test. So let's look at this here. So again, the state passing goal is approach. Our goals for these HB3 goals are going to be state, are going to be met at the met grade, grade level. So when you see these scores, I just want to make sure to recalibrate that, so that when they appear low, you're going to go, wait, I want you to see what we're going to show to you here. So here we have in subgroups where we all as 54%, just to take that in perspective, are at the meets grade level. All right, you can see the subpopulations there. You're like, well, what does that mean in comparison to the state? So we've added those comparisons to the state. So as you can see, there are areas that we do outshine, there are areas that we need to grow in. And it's truly, again, like we've said before, it's just not about passing. For us, we want solid foundations for our kiddos in third grade reading. Okay? Our next goal would be in second grade math, or excuse me, in third grade math, increase the percentage of third grade students to score at the meets grade level on star math from 60% to blank by 2025. So let's look at that in comparison to the state. As well, we have some areas that we outperform, and we have some areas that we need to grow in. Okay, Mr. Colson?
On our college, career, military readiness, we have two years of solid data from the class of 2018 and the class of 2019. Our baseline is going to be the class of 2019, but I wanted to show you 18, because that is the first year of finalized data that was available to us. And as you can see, between 2000, the class of 2018 and 2019, we did show growth in all but one of the areas. I also wanted to point out to you that we have pretty solid data for the class of 2020, last year's group. And as you can see, in the all column, there's a 10% decrease in scores. A lot of that is due to the pandemic. As far as industry-based certifications go, those are traditionally taken by our students in the spring of the year. So the industry-based certifications took a dip. Also, we didn't have the participation and the success in AP that we would have had, because we went virtual for the last nine weeks, and a lot of students didn't feel like they would have a chance to be successful on the AP exam, so they they didn't take them. And a score of three or higher to earn a point is required. And then the SAT, ACTs, you know, the last nine weeks is also a pretty large testing window for our students, and we felt like that impacted our scores, along with the state changed some of the rules. We used to be able to earn a half a point for students who completed a CTE coherent sequence, of course, courses. Well, they took that away, and they also virtually eliminated the military readiness component, because some school districts had abused that. So we really didn't have an opportunity to get credit for those students who did enlist in the military, short of a collaboration between TEA and the Department of Defense to verify who actually enlisted and actually attended basic training. So that that's a preliminary look of what we know right now. And then as we go forward, we will also present you our progress measures and the actual numbers we want to work towards.
So looking at our goals, we have to have progress measures, or what are we going to do, strategies we're going to put in place, maybe hyper-focus on certain areas to help us get to those goals. And they also have baseline and targets. They look at the population, they're predictable of the goal, they're influenced by our superintendent, by our leadership team. So let's look at our first one. One thing that I, we wanted to mention to you is our overall goal is to include pre-K, right? But we are in the process of solidifying our pre-K reporting options to be able to bring for you that solid data. So I envision us looking and coming in April 20th and adopting some goals, and then the next school year adding pre-K on. So looking at our first reading goal, let's go ahead and start with our progress measure number one. So the first thing we want to look at, remember we talked about that in HB3, it had required for us to look at a systemic phonemic awareness and phonics program. We had come to you earlier in the year to ask if we could purchase Hegarty and so on and so forth. So our progress here is to measure that effectiveness from kindergarten to second grade, right? So you can look right now, this is middle of the year data, right? It's the first time that we've looked at this through our M-class program. It's middle of the year data, and I want to make you aware of that as well. At the end of last year, because of the pandemic, we didn't test our kids on our reading levels, right? So this is middle of the year data. So it'd be really interesting to see how we do at the end of the year the increase, because we're like, wow, 42%. But again, we go back to it's middle of the year. Just wanted to give you perspective. Our second progress measure is to look at kindergartners at the end of the grade, at the end of the year, to look at what they're doing on grade level for reading. We use the BASS. It's a reading level test that we do. It's an inventory to see where the kids are, you know, in instructional, and also at independent level, and it lets us know how they're doing with fluidity, if it's a phonemic awareness issue, or a word study issue, or if they're, it's a comprehension issue. That's what those assessments do for us. And these right now are in the middle of the year data. I just want to say, for children that were out as long as they were out, for children that started virtually as an all group to be at the middle of the year at 72, I mean, this is just, this is a positive for us, right? But again, our goal would be from year to year, end of year to end of year. Our third progress measure here is to look at first grade students in the same fashion, right? First grade begins to be the year where you move all really quickly through those reading levels, and it's the year that you probably move to five or six reading levels. So this is where we are currently, and we want to grow that. And then here's second grade. So we would also look at at increasing our students' reading levels, or just see their grade, grade level in second grade. All of that, making sure going into third, and more and more of our children are in reading level, because they have to access text to be able to understand it for comprehension on the third grade reading star. So for math, we've done something a little bit differently this year, and we've piloted, we've piloted, excuse me, a rapid math assessment test. And we've done this with 500 students in our school district, and we picked schools throughout the feeder systems and through different demographics. And here's why we did this, because what we had currently were what we call district common assessments, or like checkpoints that measure the curriculum. But truly, at this early age, we want to look at if children understand numeracy. And to believe it or not, decomposing a number for little kids is all about algebra at the long term. So we did these rapid math assessments. I know you've heard of reading academies before, but about five or six years ago, we had math academies, and then these came with that. So we piloted these assessments, and these are what our goals are going to be based on from years to, for our years to come. So our kindergarten would be looking at the numeracy rate, and then we would look at the first grade numeracy rate, which is 66% right now, kinder it's 82%. And these are middle of the year right now. Okay? And then, and then our second grade numeracy rate, from 72% to what we would do middle of the year. So our progress measures for career and college readiness.
Yes. This is the the chart we looked at before. And again, we start with the class of 2019. This is lagging data. So the class of 2019 finally gets reported finally in August of 2020. So we're a little bit behind on those. But again, our goal is to increase the percentage of our students who are college, career, military ready from 75% to a number that we will bring to you later this month. Our first progress measure is to, that our graduates who met TSI, Texas Success Initiative, Accupacers, and that's again, the SAT, ACT, and the TSI Accuplacer test, from 56% to a certain percentage by June of 2025. That's our first progress measure. Our second progress measure is to take, increase the number of graduates who earn an industry-based certification from 8% to a certain percent by June of 2025. And our third progress measure is to the number of economically disadvantaged students that met CCMR will increase from 60% to a certain percentage by June of 2025. We selected the economically disadvantaged group because we felt like it touched more kids than any other subpopulation by itself, because you're also impacting, every one of these groups has economically disadvantaged students within them. And just a overall comment, we talked in November when we presented CCMR to you, that the state's goal is that by the, by the year 2030, that 60% of students will have earned a point for CCMR, demonstrated college, career, military readiness. So we feel like we're well on the way to meeting those goals.
How are you getting these percentages?
Comes from
Is it a percentage of that demographic, or is it a percentage of the entire population?
It is a percentage of the entire population that met that, the demographic as compared to that population.
Okay.
And when do we get most of our data in? You're saying August?
Finalized in August. We'll get a, TEAs provide a tracker, report, and a verifier report that we can check periodically through the year that updates our data. So the, like the, the class of 2020 will be finalized in June of 2021.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand is why aren't we setting our goal in June if we're not going to get our data till August?
Something we can consider.
I don't, I mean, why put yourself in a hole before you even know?
Sure.
That is the biggest challenge with the CCMR, it's a year lagging data.
Right, right, yeah.
It's always going to be a year lagging. And so there's different ways. And we already know we're going to do, next year, state is going to be lower than the pre-K.
Just because of the pandemic.
So we're going to be starting to try to come back from that. And those are good points. Those are things that are being discussed in the goal setting.
Can I ask a question about the whole process here? And I want to ask a generic question that relates to all of them, using an example from the third grade literacy goals. Okay? So we're looking at four years out, you know, targeting these changes by 2025. How much leeway do we have once these goals are set, if there is some change that that drastically affects our ability to achieve these goals? Can we modify these along the way? And here's my example. So there's, there's four bills pending in Austin right now that relate to increased testing for dyslexia and to moving, essentially effectively moving dyslexia services from 504 to IDEA, which means we could potentially identify substantially more dyslexic students and be serving them under the special education subpop where they're no, they're not currently captured. So if, let's say, that subpop drastically increases this, just the numbers in that subpop, and that somehow affects our ability to to achieve these goals, do we have the ability to to alternate, to to ability to, to alternate, to, to, to change these along the way if there is some major change like that?
Absolutely. So part of the process is that we're going to have a school board monitoring calendar. So not only are we going to set the goals and come to you together what we recommend for us to look at and see what's appropriate, we will also monitor them throughout the year. So it's not like we've set the goal and then we have to stick to that same five-year plan. We can every year look at the goals and say, let's adjust here, or the population changed, just like Mr. Colson said. We went from a seventy-one to a seventy-five in CCMR, and then, whoa, we went to sixty-five, what happened? So those, those things will happen in the data. The good news about these, these monitoring goals is what it will set forth and how we look at the population. Like, you look at the reading one, for example, when administrators and campuses look at their reading goals, they're not only going to look at about third grade reading star, they're going to say, is it a third grade, is it a second grade fluency issue? Is it a first grade phonemic awareness issue? It's going to help them guide where their staff development, where their instruction needs to be according to the data and how it's being disaggregated. So the richness will happen, no matter where the kiddos lie, we're still going to look at them, right? So I think that's a positive, and that is the goal. It's an ongoing relationship for us, for us to share with you what that looks like. And to Mr. Sanders' point, looking at why not come in June, our, our literacy and math goals are something we do at the beginning of the year, we do them at the middle of the year, and we do them at the end of the year. So it, we would be coming to you to give you some updates. As you can see here, it's something that's recommended during those times, you can see where we're doing with reading and with math. And with Mr. Colson's area, we already come on a couple of times during the year to present that data. So it is fluid, just like any district improvement plan, there's something on paper, but it's fluid, depending on our needs at that time, so are our goals.
Thank you.
I like the fact you have the goals and then you're consistently tracking that data, and just because you have a goal, I mean, like you said, there's always anomalies, and if those can be expressed and understood, and like you said, at least you're researching back to determine what's the causation for where we are in relation to the goal, it may not be that the goal needs to be changed, it may need, that we need to change some practice, or enhance a practice because it's working so well, we're above our goal.
So are there any other questions for Mr. Colson or myself?
It'd be great if we were killing it and wanted to raise the bar even more.
I think when you start talking about reading academies and math academies.
There's a potential there.
I think you're setting yourself up for that potential to be well above whatever